Mr. Mayor. Mayor Jennings, can we get the meeting started?
You know, everybody acts like there's a big rush. There's no big rush unless you get little stickers.
Yeah.
If you get stickers, everybody's in a rush. Well, some of us didn't get any stickers, so it's all right. But, you know, anybody holds a grudge or anything.
Oh, no.
So, you know, we just have to... No, no, I need the package. I get... geez. All right. Well, we'll call this, uh, meeting of council to order. Uh, if we can have the roll call and maybe we'll have the pledge by... Oh, let's see. Who would like, anybody like to volunteer for the pledge? You sure you know it?
Don't strain yourself.
All right. And who would like, anybody like to say the prayer?
I'd say you have Reverend Maruho do it.
Okay, we have been... Okay, Reverend, uh, Carlos, if you don't mind doing the prayer and, and we'll have, our trustee, uh, Highway Councilman is guaranteeing us to get one, uh, get our highway to Tatum done within the next, uh, eighteen months. We better call the roll first. Council lady, would you call the roll?
Counselor Arnold? Present. Counselor Halverson? I believe she's online. Okay, she is not online. Counselor Hildebrand?
Present.
Counselor Corn?
Here.
Counselor Maruho?
Here.
Counselor Cabin?
Here.
Counselor Oropesa?
Here.
Counselor Chapel?
Here.
Counselor Moore? He's absent. Counselor Johnson? Do you have a quorum? Eight to zero.
Okay, so please rise for the pledge by Counselor Johnson and the prayer by Counselor Maruho.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, I come before you and give you all glory and honor. We thank you for allowing us to be here. Father God, I ask you to give us wisdom and make decisions that we go forward today. Father God, I ask you to put protection around our city, our first responders, our police officers, Father God. I thank you for all you've done in our lives. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Okay. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Councilman Hildebrand, item one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I move to approve the agenda for the July eleventh, twenty twenty-four regular city council meeting with the following changes. Item four, remove completely from the consent agenda. Item five, on the abstract list under the financial consideration is incorrect and needs to be changed to Sourcewell number zero four zero six two one dash PII. Item nine, which is the funding source for the CAT Wagner authorization not to exceed six hundred but not to exceed sixty thousand. To remove the landfill capital budget, item number two, the CAT one forty LVR all-wheel-drive motor grade vehicle, or motor grade, motor grader in the amount of five hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred and eleven thousand dollars to be removed from the consent agenda. Item twenty-five, remove and place this item on the consent agenda as is a housekeeping. Remove item twenty-six and twenty-seven and place them on the consent agenda. Item twenty-eight, items ICIP list, item number ten should read forty-two thousand, seven hundred square feet, not forty-two point five square feet. And item fifteen, to be taken off the consent agenda to be placed on the regular agenda. Sure. Item four, remove completely from the consent agenda. Item five, the abstract listed under the financial consideration is incorrect and needs to be changed to Sourcewell number zero four zero six two one dash PII. Item nine.
He had a question about if that was on our desk. Is that...
No, that is not it. That, what's on your desk? Like, maybe that is it. Is that it?
It is.
That's it. What's on your, on your desk, or sorry. And then, item nine, removing, changing the funding source for the CAT Wagner authorization from six hundred thousand to sixty thousand. Not to exceed sixty thousand.
Fifth one, fifth one down on nine.
Yeah. Are you there, counselor? And then, removing the, from the landfill capital budget, item number two, which is the CAT one forty LVR all-wheel-drive motor grader in the amount of five hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars.
Okay. Item two.
Item two on there is down here.
Well, they're not numbered. Oh.
Well, they're not numbered on the agenda, I'm sorry. But, it's... It says funding, source.
Fifth bullet point.
Yep. Yep, here, five, that's, are you pulling that out altogether?
Taking that off the agenda.
Five, that's item twenty-five. It's the third one up from the bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah. But you were changing also, you were adding the sixty thousand to me.
Moving it from six hundred thousand to sixty thousand. Just above it.
Yeah. All right.
The reason that move is because of the removal of the, uh, grader at this point in time. That was included in there to begin with and now the grader is taking it off the agenda. We all right there so far? Okay. And then, item twenty-five, remove it from the regular agenda and place it on the consent agenda also with items twenty-six and twenty-seven, move to the consent agenda.
So twenty-five, twenty-six, and seven are all going consent.
Correct. Item twenty-eight on the ICIP list, item ten should read forty-two thousand, seven hundred square feet, not forty-two point five square feet. And then, item fifteen, move from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. Twenty-six and twenty-seven, that's on the addendum. Did you get the, did you get the addendum agenda, counselor?
Counselor Corn, do you mind speaking into your mic?
Yeah, I do mind, but I'm, I'm good. My counselors to the right and left have it. They've got their notes right, so I'm good to go.
Was that, uh, the second was by Councilman Cabin? All right. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none of, uh, Madam Clerk, would you like to call the roll or would you like to voice vote? How would you like that today? Approval. Have a roll call?
Yes, sir, just.
Okay, if the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Hildebrand?
Aye.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Maruho?
Yes.
Counselor Cabin?
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Chapel?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I want to clarify the record that this vote was as amended.
As amended, yes, that's correct. Okay. So, by a vote of eight, with eight in affirmative and none in the negative, that the item two, the agenda, has been approved by a vote of eight in affirmative, none in the negative, as amended. Okay. Okay. So next we have approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
As amended.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve the consent agenda as amended for the July eleventh, twenty twenty-four regular city council meeting.
Second.
Here, we have a motion by, uh, by Councilman Hildebrand, seconded by Council Lady Arnold. Is there any discussion? Seeing none of the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Hildebrand?
Aye.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Maruho?
Yes.
Counselor Cabin?
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Chapel?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, I believe that would be by a vote of eight and affirmative, none in the negative, it's been approved. Okay, next we go, what's, uh...
Mr. Mayor, for the record, Counselor Moore has joined the meeting.
Oh, she joined that, so there'll be nine? Or she joined after the vote?
I didn't hear her. She just joined, so it was eight to zero.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Fifteen, okay, item fifteen. Item fifteen, approve the award of the Hobson Flood Prevention Design Project to freeze and nickels the amount of one million, fifty thousand, and eight hundred and forty dollars, which includes grocery receipts tax. Councilman Corn.
Yes, sir, go ahead. I have some questions before I make a motion. If I would be allowed to give that leeway, the mayor said yes. So, um, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You guys are not too loud today. In the back, it's kind of hard to hear. You guys are not speaking that loud or the PA system's not fired up as well.
Does help?
Yes, sir.
So, I've got your proposed plan here. How much of this money have we already, uh, encumbered?
What are we talking about? The Hobson Road?
Yeah.
Okay. The Hobson Road, we haven't encumbered any of the money. This is the first phase, is to get the designer on board. And when we did the RFP, we went full RFP. We didn't go just with our vendors. We advertised for RFP. We only got one response. Um, so the, I, the plan is to have a kickoff meeting and then have this designed and ready to bid in January. And open bids, I believe, in February, March, so we could start construction and get a PO for the next fiscal year. What we have encumbered in the budget right now is approximately a million dollars of the nine point seven million dollar, uh, W. Water Trust Board, uh, grant is what we'll be using for this work.
But you haven't encumbered that money?
Negative.
So what's the penalty if we turn this idea down and save sixty-two, eight, forty-eight, eleven a year till twenty, twenty, till twenty forty-five?
If we turn it down? I don't think, I don't know if there's a penalty. I just know it'd be a political penalty, penalty. Because this is one of the biggest grants that Water Trust Board's given.
Well, I'm going to go ahead and, and move this because it came out of my committee. But I have great concerns, given our budget predicament we're in. And nobody's really explained to me how we can afford this, round, round it up a little bit, sixty-two thousand a year till twenty forty-five.
Well, yeah, the sixty-two thousand would come out of the road fund, counselor. So I know that, I mean, sixty-two thousand, we do two blocks less of something. I mean, that's the easiest way to explain it. But if you look at the context of the, the, the agreement, this is eighty-seven percent grant. So you're going to get nine point seven million dollars worth of work on one point two million that we have to repay.
I, I understand, and I'm all for this project.
Yes, sir.
Just not now. I think this has been, this problem's been existent for how many decades?
Yeah.
And, and to fix it right now and burden our, our very stretched budget for an extra sixty-three thousand dollars a year.
Well, I, yeah, and I think for an extra sixty-three thousand dollars a year for the money that we're going to spend is, is pretty cheap. I mean, when you look at the, the return that you're going to get. And all I say, there's ten of you there, I would ask that the, ten of you look at the, the return that we're going to get. Eighty-seven percent, uh, grant, yes, we can return it, but the thing is, there might not be a penalty on paper. There might be a penalty on the name of Roswell when we submit more, and they say, well, these guys turned back a grant. So, counselors, you vote as you, as you feel. As city engineer, I think the cost that we're going to get is, is, is good. Sixty-two thousand off of the road fund. I mean, we will do less, uh, slurry seal or whatever, cut down a couple of blocks. I just, the thing, the thing is, it's not just when we do the drainage, I don't know if you took the time to read the scope of work, but the scope of work is, yes, we're going to put storm drains in, we're going to put some detention ponds, we're going to probably have to redo the ditch that's on the north side of, uh, Hobson, east of Maine. But when you're doing all that, the other thing is, and you've heard me joke about it, people say there's no storm drains in Roswell. There are storm drains in Roswell. There's the streets. So one of the, one of the things that we got to do is we need to improve Hobson as part of the, as part of the drainage. So what I would like to do as part of this, if we can fit it in, because we got constrained right away, uh, problems, we got the rail tracks on one side, on the south side. But as you're going there, you saw what we did as you come off of two eighty-five going into the air center. If we could have at least that same typical from the railroad tracks all the way to the western perimeter road, okay? So do that, and then as we're doing drainage, we have to realign the drop inlets that are there at Garden and Hobson, I mean, at Maine and Hobson. So when you reline the, the drop inlets, while we're there, let's widen and improve the intersection. Let's use some of this money also to improve the geometric to the intersection, the safety of the intersection to help not only with the flow of water, but then put in a traffic signal. So now, you know, there's a lot involved to make the water flow on Hobson, the water flow within the storm drains, and the safety improvements, the pavement improvements, it's all one big picture. You just can't go in there and, and do one thing. This, this, and again, this is all in my scope of work, that there's a lot of work involved, and we're getting nine point seven million dollars. When I put in for this grant, because we've been talking about this four or five years, I thought, we're not going to get nothing this big. And then it came along. But nine point seven million dollars, sixty-two thousand a year for the twenty years, that's fairly cheap.
And this, if I remember correctly, comes out of the GRT portion of the road tax, is that correct?
Yes, that would come out of the road fund.
Okay. So that's going to impact all the other proj, road projects we have in town. You're going to have to cut back sixty-three million dollars.
Sixty-three thousand dollars.
How much?
Sixty-three thousand dollars a year.
Did I misstate it? I'm sorry. Sixty-three thousand dollars, round figures.
Mm-hmm.
And so that would preclude getting sidewalks improved, possibly. Could improve the streets that are in town that are in desperate need of repair, possibly. Bridges, we've got a ton of bridges that probably need to have some work done on them.
If you look at, if you look at what the, the budget is now, we were, we were moving along pretty good, having two collector, I mean, two mill and field projects at one and a half million dollars a piece. This year, we're down to one. I get it. And we've already advertised that one. We're rocking and rolling. But as I say, sixty-three thousand dollars, take it out of the micro-surfacing, which is the, the least effective of all that we have, we would be taking out a few blocks off of what we're doing now. And you've heard me say this, we've got three hundred plus miles. When we did our, uh, pavement condition rating in two thousand and twenty, we were a D. We were getting a report card. They recommended sixteen million dollars, okay? Sixteen million dollars a year to make it, to make a difference. Five million dollars just to, to hold your head where you're at right now. Well, we're holding our head where we're at right now, and then with this year's budget, it's been cut even more. The other thing, I mean, we're not gaining, so am I, I'm willing to sacrifice sixty-three thousand, a few blocks of, of slurry seal, micro-surfacing, to get this done. Because the other thing this is going to do, is like I say, with the Hobson improvements, I have to improve the road with, and the storm drain together. You can't do them, can't do them separately. We are now have an event that's coming into the airport. Here's our chance with eighty-seven percent grant to do a little work on Hobson Road that's going to carry a lot of traffic. Here's our chance to put a traffic signal at Maine and Hobson and improve the whole aesthetics as you walk, go into the thing. So, I mean, I know it says Hobson Drainage, but the scope of work, you can't, when you tear up, you put in a water line, you put utility, you tear up the road, you got to fix the road. Well, the road is also a hydraulic conduit. So, I mean, I think the city of Rawl will be making a mistake if we turn this down. We're not only doing drainage, we're doing roadway, we're doing geometric safety, and at a time that the airport's going to draw more attention, we do a little, we do a little cleaning up and improving on one of the roads that's right around there. Know what else to say?
So how far would this go on, uh, probably a needed road? Um, that would be four-lane Country Club from Montana to Sycamore.
Sycamore, okay, Sycamore from second to Country Club is about six million dollars. That's the thing, I was contacted for the ICIP. If you're looking at Sycamore from second to, uh...
No, no. I'm worried about Country Club right now.
Well, Country Club, the plans are done. That's five point nine million dollars. But this is Water Trust Board money, okay? This is flood prevention. It's a different cookie jar. Water Trust does the drinking water, the reservoirs, flood prevention. Country Club is its own thing, that you'd have to get road funds, legislative funds, others, others. We're, we're, the way it's structured, we can take advantage of this. And again, eighty-seven percent grant, which is eight million dollars, that we don't have to pay back. If we're talking about economics, if we're talking at your cost benefit ratio, it's all there.
Councilman Hildebrand?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Nehar?
Yes, sir.
When would that, uh, first, what year would that first payment need to be made?
I believe in two thousand and twenty-six.
Twenty-six?
Yes, sir.
Which is two fiscal years old.
Right, and that's another reason why we're in a rush. We have to have this built by June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. We're pretty dang close. And at, at that point, those two years, that's when we start paying the loan back.
We don't know what the budget situation is going to be two years from now.
Nope.
So it's nothing that we're going to have to expand and adjust the budget at the current moment?
Well, I mean, no.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
No, no, sir.
Any further comments? Yes, Councilman Cabin?
Louis, I, I was on the road coming back from Houston during this finance meeting, and, and I asked you a couple of questions. I, I think this, this project has been kind of in the works since, did you say two thousand?
It's been in the works?
Well, it seemed like you've been talking about doing this for more than four years, but, but twenty twenty...
Yeah, because, and, and we would put in an application and we didn't get it. And then previous administration said, try it again. Then they said, don't try it. Then they said, put it again. And so the last time that we put it in is where we're at, it finally hit. Uh, so it's been looked at, but it's hard, I mean, as you guys look at the, let's, let's take the reservoir project. One of the comments that I've heard from the reservoir project is, we didn't get enough grant money. It's more loan than, than grant. Get it, I agree. So what you're going to do when you turn this down, eighty-seven percent grant. They remember in Santa Fe, remember that. They will remember that we turned some money back, especially eighty-seven percent grant. Ten million dollars for, I mean, almost ten million dollars for sixty-three thousand a year for twenty years.
So, I asked another question about us being financially committed to this deal.
We, we have closed on the loan. We have closed on the loan, yes.
Okay, but I just heard you say we're, we're not financially committed.
I don't...
I'm not going to tell you that we're opposed to this deal, okay? And you keep talking about how we're going to turn it down tonight. But what we need to hear are the facts and the truth on these things, and not just what you want us to hear, okay? And so I appreciate everything you do for the city right now, but when the question's asked, you can't make... asked, you can't make it sound like we've already taken out this loan and we're done with it. I don't understand why we're looking at it again, because we voted on this deal five months ago, and I thought it was already done at that stage, and then suddenly it's back on finance and we're back to voting on it. I'm, I'm all for it, but I, 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 I need it to be out front, I need it to be transparent.
As, as, as I understand, we closed on the loan, I've never had to turn one back. So, I would think, in any business, when you've already taken a loan out on a house, you're on the hook is what the, and that's how I understand it, but I've never, I've never had this happen. I mean, I've had it happen when we get the agreement before we close, and we don't have the project, and, yeah.
Well, and like I said, I appreciate that, but, but I just heard something different tonight, when Councilor Corn asked you, and you said, well, yeah, we could go ahead and turn it down, and so that to me, just doesn't sound like I'm giving...
And, and I said that, I'm not too sure, because, I mean, all I get is the closing of the loan, I put it in my file, I didn't, I don't know the, the legal structure of it, I presented all the technical stuff, but in the way I look at it, if it's a loan, you've closed on it, you've committed.
Louis, thank you for everything you do for the city.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe what we're talking about here is just approval of this contract, that's all we're talking about. This project has already been approved by this council. So what you're approving tonight is the contract for the engineering study. So there's, unless you wanna go back and bring it back to council to not approve this project, but this project has already been approved by this council. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, any further comments? Seeing, uh, I would like to comment a little bit about this project and that's, and, uh, I don't believe it's a conflict of interest, because I, I believe it's just doing the job I've been appointed to do, but, uh, as the Flood Commissioner, I would just tell you that, when you look about the greatest opportunity for Roswell to have, uh, flooding, one of the greatest opportunities we have for flooding is if it rains, just out there to the west of the base, uh, where it rained, uh, a couple of years ago, and we had quite a bit of flooding there, uh, why I would just say that I, at first I wasn't really in favor of this that much, because I, I didn't know that much about it, but as I looked at it and studied it, uh, one of the greatest potential areas we have for flooding is where the, all the road from Sunset all the way to southeast Maine. Because, and that's why I think this Hobson Road is so valuable, is because this at least gets some of the, will get some of the water across the, uh, Highway two eighty-five. If you look at all the places that flood on Highway two eighty-five, there's a lot that flood every time we have a rain out there, uh, west of the base, and it, Down Dip, it's where it all goes, it all goes over there, and Allen Roofing and all those people better have their rubber duckies out when that, uh, water comes across there. And I think that, uh, this, I know, I can understand Councilman Corn's concern, but I think, uh, if you look about the damage that was really done to a lot of people in the last flood we had there, and, and I know it'd been a long time since it had it, but it was, uh, a little rainstorm and, and, uh, that came out there, in the west out there, and it washed out that dike had been there for twenty years, or twenty-five years, it washed that out, and, and, uh, now we built all that back, uh, four or five feet taller and twelve feet wider, and the Flood Commissioner's fixed that, so we probably shouldn't have that problem again. But the problem still exists, if it's right between the base fence and west, that flooding can still happen. This would at least give one place for water to go out across and get it across southeast Maine to Maine.
You're, you're correct, Mayor, because the first place we're gonna start picking up water will be at the intersection of Hobson and the West Perimeter Road.
And, and I mean, and that's exactly what we had, and when we don't, if you don't get that water off, where's it going next? It's gonna flood inside that base, too.
That's where the storm drain would start, right there at that intersection.
The thing is, it, yeah, it's, this is a, I mean, I'm not saying anybody's gonna vote against it, they're just worried about how we spend money, I understand that, but, and, uh, and I, Councilor Corn is certainly good at watching us and hope, keep, keeping our feet to the fire, uh, but I think from a public safety point of view and flooding and what, and the potential dan- disaster that we had, now it lasted for twenty years, and you're rolling the dice in some respects, but until we figure out a way to address the Highway Commission and get them to understand that from, from, uh, really from Terrace Hills Miniature Golf, all the way out to, uh, you know, to the base, that whole way is the biggest, one of the biggest dams in Roswell, and just like at, at Rashere Road where they have two twenty-four inch culverts, you know, if you put those culverts, uh, uphill, only half the water goes through them, that's exactly what they did. And, uh, so I don't know, I'm just, uh, from a public safety sign in, probably as the Flood Commissioner, I would just say, you know, I think that this is something that is, in, in the long run, I think it would be beneficial, and anytime, if you can get, you have to weigh the eighty-seven percent other monies versus thirteen percent local monies, and, uh, that's a pretty good investment, in my opinion, to see what we can get, uh, to begin at least making some holes across southeast Maine. And I, I think that's one of the most important things we need to do, and that's all. Okay, I'm sorry, any further comments? The clerk will call the roll. Or, I'd better have a motion, yeah.
You got a motion, you never had a second.
Yeah, we had a motion for Councilor Corn, is there a second?
Second.
Council Lady Arnold seconds.
What was his motion? What was your motion?
To pass it.
To pass it?
Have a motion, a second by Council Lady Arnold. Uh, to pass it, for a do-pass?
Yeah.
That's right, so, okay, uh, if the clerk will call the roll on a do-pass motion on item fifteen.
Council Arnold?
Yes.
Council Hildebrand?
Aye.
Council Corn? Council Marujo?
Yes.
Council Cabin?
Yes.
Council Oropeza?
Yes.
Council Chapel?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Council Moore?
Yes.
Council Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to one.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. So what do we got next, item? Non-action items? I don't know. Okay, item nineteen, for approval of the amendments of, uh, the regular city council meeting on June thirteenth, two thousand and four, Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve the amendments from the regular city council meeting on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
First by, we have a motion to pass it by Councilman Hildebrand, second by Councilman, uh, Johnson.
Mr. Mayor, that item was approved at the consent, at the approval of...
You had it on consent?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
We did. So, okay, I move we, all the appropriate motions be stricken from the record here. Okay, so now we're on item twenty-one. See, I was right. Uh, today we have, uh, Mr. Conkle, uh, from the Airport Advisory Commission Updates.
You should have, uh, three drawings in your packages, and they may be shown up here. I, I would prefer that you not look at those right now, and you please listen to me. Especially you, Councilor Corn. Good evening, Mayor Jennings and, uh, Roswell City Councilors. I appreciate the opportunity on behalf of the Airport Advisory Commission to update you on recent air center activities. The AAC held our July meeting on Tuesday, June the second, I'm sorry, July the second. We had some airport tenants and Armstrong Engineering attend our meeting, and as always, a reminder to the, uh, city councilors, you're always welcome at our meetings. Our meeting was extremely consequential this month, not just because we reviewed activities in twenty-seven different areas, and reviewed two leases that are on your agenda this evening, but also because we again discussed two very important items. One item was our discussion about airport building insurance payment problems with tenants. The other critical item was our discussion about the airport terminal building update and expansion, especially considering the air races, which are just around the corner in September of this coming year. Both of these items will be further discussed in my report. Passenger boardings for May twenty twenty-four were five thousand nine hundred and thirty-three, and for June, they were up to six thousand three hundred and fifty-nine. In May twenty twenty-three, boardings were thirty-six hundred and forty-two, and in June they were thirty-six oh five. So you can see the third flight, uh, in and out of Roswell and DFW has really had a positive impact on our passenger boardings. Airport operations were two thousand and eighty-three in June compared to sixteen hundred and seventy-six in June of twenty twenty-three. Aircraft parking numbers continue to be fairly stable, with two hundred and thirty-seven aircraft parked in June compared to two hundred and twenty-eight aircraft parked in June a year ago. The Air Center Engineering Contract, RFP, received four proposals on June the twenty-fifth. A recommendation will go to legal in July and the city council in August. The new four-year contract should be awarded by October the fifteenth. The Air Services Development and Consulting Service contract should be approved tonight with the city manager to negotiate the final contract. The airport master plan update is still scheduled to be completed by December the thirtieth. The airport strategic plan continues to move forward with the goal-setting component of the plan being currently worked on. A discussion was held on the proposed large aviation hangar, that hangar is two hundred thousand plus square feet, uh, south of Dean, to be constructed south of Dean Baldwin. The same developer is interested in also building several small aircraft hangars on the northeast portion of the air center, close to Hangar ninety-one, uh, for general aviation aircraft. So we've got tremendous interest, and this has all taken place just since we were awarded, uh, the air races. Building ten eighty-one was also discussed, uh, further cost information on repairs were requested of airport staff, reference to new fire panel, HVAC, interior renovations. This is the, the large two-story office slash warehouse building, uh, that was previously used by TMC, but has been vacant and unused for several years. Updates on completing wind and hail claims on several buildings were provided by Jenna Lanfer, two buildings were recently completed, Hangar eighty-five, which is leased by air sale, and the youth challenge office building roof were also completed. Jenna also provided an update on vacant properties, uh, Building ninety-three is to be leased to the American Red Cross for thirty to sixty days for use in support of the Ria dosa fire situation. And in addition, and this is great news, in addition FEMA has leased the office building six eleven, vacant since the state health department was forced to vacate, even though they had agreed to a significant rent increase of twelve dollars a square foot. That building has been vacant for approximately thirty-nine months. This was a loss in revenue at the twelve dollars a square foot of approximately seven hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars, because we didn't go ahead and lease that to the state health department. The current lease to FEMA is for three months certain, with the possibility of a twelve month lease at nine dollars per square foot. FEMA is also leasing approximately ten acres in the southeast portion of the air center to have up to three hundred and people, uh, due to displacement by the Ria dosa fires. So the air center is certainly working outside of the community to assist the, uh, Ria dosa fire situation. The insurance premium problem at the air center is still an ongoing issue. There are several facets to this problem, not the least of which is the huge four hundred percent increase in premiums from twenty twenty-two slash twenty-three compared to twenty twenty-three slash twenty-four. No business can effectively budget for a four hundred percent increase, uh, year over year. That kind of increase is generally unreasonable, especially when insurance premium costs are tens of thousands of dollars, and up to, we have one tenant whose insurance premium cost exceeded two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Therefore, we have requested a meeting with one of the tenants later, uh, this month to resolve the insurance premium issue and move forward on the current, uh, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year. Hopefully, insurance premium payment issues can be agreed to and resolved at this meeting. I've read through, uh, an extensive economic study developed by the College of Business from the University of Nevada at Reno for the National Championship Air Races in twenty twenty-three. This was a one-week event that went from September thirteenth to September the seventeenth. I've summarized some of the pertinent, pertinent data from that report to provide you with information on the economic impact to the city of Reno. The total economic impact to Reno was a hundred and fifty-eight million dollars plus for that one week. The number of attendees to the air races was a hundred and fifty thousand plus people. Eighty thousand of those attendees were non-local attendees, they weren't actually in Reno, they came from outside of Reno. Approximately thirty-one percent of the non-local attendees traveled by air to the air races. Approximately 31% of the non-local attendees traveled by air to the air races. That equates to 24,800-plus or minus people arriving by air for the air races. I previously just gave you the passenger boardings leaving Roswell for the month of June. Does anybody, it was just a few minutes ago, but do any of you remember what that number was? I must have gone too fast. It was 5,933 boarding for last month, not one week for last month. That is 24% of the number of passengers that flew into Reno during the week of the air races. Now, you have a pretty reasonable grasp of the magnitude of the difficulties that Roswell faces in moving people through our current airport terminal. So the final item that I want to bring to the attention of the city council this evening is an overview of the air center terminal building update and enlargement. With the National Championship Air Races coming to Roswell in 2025, Roswell is likely 18 to 24 months behind having adequate facilities and infrastructure to accommodate the races, especially reference airport terminal facilities to check in, security screen, board and exit aircraft, retrieve luggage, and accommodate rental vehicle pickup and return. We have a wide range of estimates of people that will likely use the Roswell Airport to get to and leave Roswell for the air races and the likelihood of as many people flying in and out of Roswell as the Reno Airport is not highly likely, we understand that, especially for the first few years of the air races. However, it is the conclusion of the Airport Advisory Commission that the Roswell City Council needs to inform itself as quickly as possible about the importance of accommodating a significant number of air travelers into and out of Roswell due strictly to the air races. The number of travelers that actually come into and out of the Reno-Stead Airport for the air races, as I previously stated, is approximately 25,000 people during that week. Obviously, Roswell does not currently have the capacity to accommodate that many air So what does Roswell need to do to begin immediately to accommodate this huge influx of air travelers? One, the Roswell City Council in conjunction with the Roswell-Chavez County EDC and Chavez County need to identify a working group of probably four to five people along with NACAR to accommodate the movement of people into and out of the Roswell Air Center. Likely, most air travelers, especially the first couple of years, will fly into Albuquerque, Lubbock, El Paso, Midland, Odessa, and rent vehicles and travel to Roswell because there's no way based on all the information we've got to move that many people through our current terminal configuration. It's not physically possible. Item number two, within the next three months, this working group needs to expand on the available engineering studies of the Roswell Air Center Terminal Building to identify the quickest and most cost-effective way to enlarge the terminal building to accommodate passengers, TSA screening, and security holding in a security holding area prior to boarding. Number three, begin immediately to develop a plan and figure out a way to enlarge the terminal building that will not disrupt or hamper the existing operation of the terminal. Number four, identify funding sources. Just talked a lot about funding on Hobson Road Project. Identify funding sources to accommodate the terminal enlargement that the city can reasonably The city currently has $2 million in grant funding that can be used for planning out at the air center or enlarging however we can use it. Those are available grant funds and we have applied for a grant for an additional 1.5 million, but we don't have that grant approved yet, don't have those funds available and may not get it. This is just a drop in the bucket of financial needs based on information that Armstrong Engineering, our current engineering firm that advises the air center, they provided me earlier this week. I'm going to give you some basic numbers. Information by Armstrong indicates that construction costs for three gates, we have one gate now, construction costs for three gates without any update of the baggage incoming or the baggage outgoing or pickup areas for a 20,000-square-foot addition would be about $16 million. With the total project cost, engineering and everything else that goes along with it, about $20 million. And all that does is get us two lines for airport security and a holding area that we can put people in before they get on the airplanes. If the project is further reduced to minimum size for two TSA security screening lines and minimal passenger area prior to boarding without any baggage updates either incoming or outgoing, this would also include three gates but only be about 11,000 square feet as opposed to 20,000 square feet. The construction costs are estimated at 8.8 million to accomplish that with total project costs of around 12.215 million. So reducing the size of this by 9,000 square feet, which may be adequate, this is just spitballing by Armstrong Engineering. Recognizing the currently available funding, our dilemma isn't just about timing and space problems, but also about funding issues. This is why I'm suggesting that a working group be formed immediately to attack the problems that your AAC has identified that really need immediate action. That working group should begin immediately to formulate plans to address the issues that I just presented to you. You have three drawings in your packages and I think you can look at those. Those drawings were prepared four to five years ago by Armstrong Engineering and they show a total terminal rebuild that we certainly can't afford, that could easily be in the $30 million to $35 million range, depending on what is actually done to the terminal So with these numbers, the numbers of people that are realistically expected to come into Roswell in September of 2025, we've got a lot of work to do. It's not something that's going to get done immediately, but I am certainly encouraging the city council to take to heart what we're talking about tonight because if we don't start doing something immediately to identify what's possible and what we can and cannot do, we're going to have egg on our faces. That's my presentation. I'll stand for any questions and will answer as many questions as I can.
We have questions. I'm sorry, your box isn't working, so you'll just tap to. Now I have Council Lady Arnold and Councilman Orpressa.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. Conkle, thank you for that very thorough presentation. Not to put the cart before the horse, but has there been any discussion basically on reaching out to airlines, looking for additional airlines to come in or any type of extending services and different types of opportunities for actual, I guess, selection of coming into our community?
Okay, there has been discussion with American Airlines who currently services And they are knowledgeable of what we're up against and they have agreed to during certain times, bring in larger aircraft to bring more people in. If there's, if we have additional airlines coming in here, obviously that means that we've got to have additional gates out there.
Sure.
And so, and so the priority needs to be, at least in the opinion of the Airport Advisory Commission, needs to be looking at what we can reasonably do and what we can get funding for to accommodate moving a bunch of people right now, recognizing we don't know how many people are going to come through here. I mean, they're going to, they're going to get here. I had a, I had a great meeting yesterday evening with Bobby Thompson and people by the tens of thousands are excited about coming to Roswell for these air races. So they're going to get here somehow. Then they got to eat, they got to have a place to stay, and your Roswell-Chavez County EDC that the city helps fund has done miracles in getting around to all the other communities and getting commitments from them on how to accommodate this influx of people. I wouldn't expect, nor would anyone, that we'll get 150,000 people in here next September like they just had last year in Reno, Nevada. That would be surprising, but there are a lot of people that are really excited about coming to Roswell for this.
Absolutely, and I'm going to go back to my initial statement, which is not to put the cart before the horse because I do recognize that we would, of course, need to consider terminal expansion, but I would actually like to make note that while I value American Airlines, I would like to see competition. So, and I think some of those agreements can take years. That's why I was kind of wondering if you guys have gone outside our normal thread and kind of seen what Spirit or other smaller airlines may be able to offer our community because when you have one airline, people get stuck in Dallas.
And, and you're correct, but we also have to recognize that if we just, if we just have one airline, we can't slap them in the face. So we've got, we've got to work with American to do that. And American has said they'll bring, they'll bring larger aircraft in here. Now, what, what does that mean? Should we not, should we not be looking at other airlines? Absolutely not. And tonight, I think, the vote, I forget whether it's put on consent agenda or not, but the contract for the consulting to do exactly what you're talking about, I think that gets approved tonight and then I think the city manager does the final work on that contract to get that to move forward. And that consulting firm, which has come highly recommended, should assist in exactly what you're talking about because that needs to happen also. I agree. Any other questions?
Thank you. I do want to say that it's not my intention to slap American Airlines in the face.
And I misspoke, I shouldn't have said that, but we do have, we do have to take care of people.
We do because we serve a community and I think competition is key.
Yeah, I, that shouldn't have been said. Thank you for correcting me.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Orpressa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Lady Arnold beat me to the question, so, but I'll still go ahead and ask the question that I had. In Reno, how many flights, how many airlines are coming into Reno as opposed to one here?
You know, I can't answer that. I bet, I bet Mr. Spiritu probably has some idea, we could ask him.
Well, I would venture to say that because of the gambling, the casinos and all the other stuff, they probably have more than one.
Oh, no question they have more than one, but I don't know whether it's three, five or six, I don't know.
Okay. And the other, the other question is, are we also planning on trying to see if we have enough rental vehicles when the people get here?
Your Roswell. Your Roswell, yeah, your Roswell-Chavez County EDC has already worked on that with the, with the folks at the air races and the people that provide services now have told Mr. Spiritu that they will bring in extra vehicles. In fact, there likely will be so many extra vehicles, we're going to have to put them in that gravelled area northeast of the air terminal because there obviously isn't going to be enough room to put them where they are now.
And my last question is, are we working with Hobbs? Because I know Hobbs United Airlines come into Hobbs and, you know, it's only about 120 miles away.
And Hobbs has been approached as one of the communities that EDC has reached out to, to assist with several different things. A two-hour drive plus, maybe not quite two and a half, but a two-plus hour drive from Roswell to Hobbs is a little bit of stretch for most travelers, but if, if we don't have adequate rooms in Roswell, which we don't, and they can't be built, I mean, you can't just build, Reno's a huge area because of the gambling and the casinos and everything else. They've got a lot of rooms. Roswell doesn't have that many rooms. So that's why EDC has reached out to Riodosa. Thank goodness, as far as I know, the Swiss Chalet was the only hotel up there that was wrecked by the fire. I don't think any others were, but we've reached out to Artesia, Carlsbad, Hobbs, there's only one upgraded hotel, so to speak, in Lovington, so that may not make that much difference. But we've reached out to all those communities and gotten good input, participation from those communities. So it's going to be a stretch to get everybody in here, but we've got to try to work it that way. So good question, thank you.
Thank you. And I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Any further questions? Saying none, I would just comment a little bit. John Hitchcock and I met with an individual who was interested in providing services to Roswell when we went through Dallas, the area, and American Airlines and all that. We met with him and it was very interesting because there are a lot of things that happen right now when we all look at going to Phoenix and going west from Phoenix. Denver might be interested in something there because from Denver, you can go west, there are a lot of western destinations you can get out of Denver. And then, but also then there's a lot of eastern destinations you can get out of Denver too. And so, you know, so Phoenix is one, one thing. You know, when we were waiting to send my daughter off on the plane in Albuquerque, when we were coming back, there were, you know... we were coming back, there were, you know, two of Roswell's finest sisters as well. We wish we could have gone to Phoenix. You know, we didn't have to drive to Albuquerque to go to Phoenix, and, and then they were going to Maui or somewhere else. But it was, it was, that western flight is, is important to this area. And with Phoenix's growth, it's, there's an awful lot there. But is there still some pilot problems on getting pilots in there? And I would just remind the body, too, that while we're thinking about this, when you look about airfa, aircraft mechanics, the average age of an aircraft mechanic is 59 years old. And that means the kids that'll be getting out of the Roswell campus out here could start at 75, 80, maybe if you're really good, maybe $90,000, $100,000 a year out of the Roswell campus. But it's going to depend on how much experience you had in, in your previous time before you graduated from the class. But there's a lot of avenues that are open here for, if we can just keep our airport going and blowing and going and getting things moving down the road. Riedosa was a, is a big shock to this group. But the, you know, right after that fire happened, I contacted the, Mr. Telling is the head of the Ra-Ra thing, and, and informed him. And he says, "Well, you know, these kind of things happen, and, you know, we still have our commitments." So it was, it was nice. And it's, we have an awful lot to offer here. The only thing you have to look at is if you go through this airport now, just time how long it takes for each person to go through that gate, the security gate. It's over a minute each person. Well, you know, on all the 737, 800s and stuff, they carry about 180 people. So that means it'd take three hours for people to go through the terminal now to get, to get, to get on an airplane. Well, that's, you can't have an airplane sitting on the ground that long for three hours. So there's going to be, some issues have to be named. We've got to do something with the terminal. What? It's going to be hard to see and how, how to, how to get it done. That's, we're, it's a big challenge for us to do it. But other airlines are good if you get, if you do have, if we do, I like American personally, but if you, if you happen to get United or, or, you know, one of the other airlines that comes through here, if they fly back to Denver, there's a big plus for that. You know, there's a, that era of competition between the two of them could help, you know, maybe keep our prices a little more reasonable. Sometimes they seem like they get a little high. And so it's good. But we just have to keep looking and working on this. And I appreciate, Mr. Conkle, you, what you do and, and your committee. We can certainly, I'd be glad to work with you. And if you start looking about names and other councilmen, if you have names of people who might be on a airport task force, terminal building plan, give us names and suggestions and give them to our city manager, and we'll go through and see what we can come up with. It's, it's quite a challenge to, to fix the existing building that we have. And you almost have to go out through, out to the south and go out there, I don't know how far out onto the flight area you're going to have to go, but you've got to have rooms large enough to hold to 180 people. Right now, we can't handle, but maybe 90 at, at the most in looking at it. So, but it's good. Thank you, Mr. Conkle, for your report. Thank you for all you do for that. And we'll continue to look. If you all have some ideas about people who would be good on this airport committee, if you please bring your names forward.
I, I certainly appreciate your attention. Thank you. And it, it is, it's an opportunity that has been dropped in our lap. Yep, Mr. Spiritu and, and a lot of you and a lot of community members have worked really hard to land this, and we're pretty darn fortunate to have landed it. But these folks are willing to help out also. Mayor Jennings just mentioned something about, you know, running youngsters through the, through the school out there to go be aircraft mechanics. Well, these guys will sponsor scholarships. I mean, they want this, no, they need this to be successful for what they're trying to accomplish also. And I think we'll work hand in glove with them. But it's going to take more than just talking about it. It's going to take action. So I appreciate you listening, and let's take action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conkle. Next we have was item 22. And clerk, make sure it's here. Item 22, oh, it's not here, but item 22 is a recognition for the wildfire that we've had in Riedosa and recommending, resolution, you know, thanking and, and really thanking our community for stepping up and providing the resources that we did to Riedosa. I've been on firefights in Riedosa and, and other communities out for a long time, and Riedosa's had a couple of big ones, but this one was probably the granddaddy of all of them when you turn around and look at it. But as I look at our, from our own staff to the college staff, to the fair board staff, to other individuals who had restaurants and things and opened up their, their buildings, their hearts for people to come stay in. And long before the Red Cross or anybody showed up, we were notified one-on-one Wednesday at four o'clock or something like that, that we were going to, we could get an awful lot of people, because they were leaving, told to leave Riedosa that night. And then the next night, was it Tuesday or Wednesday? And then the next, and then, the next night, it was, Riedosa Downs was told to leave. We saw little bits of their flooding. But the flooding has really gotten worse and for, you know, there's, in this proclamation, we've listed a number of agencies that have been recognized that we knew were here, but there's going to be a lot more that we didn't know about. And I, I just can't tell you, I think from Sean Powell at the college, when we were out there getting everything set up and, and our city here, and the New Mexico Military Institute was very gracious as well on, on putting people up. People brought cots, food, water, you know, Walmart, all of, you know, Target, everybody went out. And it wasn't just, you know, restaurants cooked up burritos and took, took them to people and just so, well, here's, you know, 50 or 100 burritos and, and, you know, pass them around all you can. It was really caring, but, you know, as, as we in southeastern New Mexico know, there's a lot of times that we're a little different and a little more conservative than a lot of the people in this state. And you know, a lot of times, we just kind of tend to stand alone. And, and when I went to Santa Fe years ago, I remember people telling us, "Yeah, you, you damn people in Roswell, you know, you have a problem, you fix it, and then you come back and make us make it legal." Well, and that's, there's probably a lot of, too, of that. I'm sure Councilman Corn would agree with that in our time in the legislature, that we're kind, the people in southeastern New Mexico kind of stand on their own. It was really good to see that, how much of the caring and things came out about our partnerships that came with the Air Center on getting flyers in here, people to fly in here. There was so much goodwill from what, you know, from Honda or Riedosa, yeah, but Mescalero, and then you turn back around and, you know, people from Hobbs and stuff. And, you know, when we're out there, the, I think it was the second night out at the college, here comes a couple trucks from Tulareso that came all the way over here just to make sure they had clothes and everything else for people, because nobody could go through the highway. They had to come all the way around through Cloudcroft and everything. So this resolution, I don't know if the clerk wants to read it or not, or if she, did you make people a copy or? Well, it's a lot to read. If she would like to read it, we could have her read it, but I'm not particularly going to read it. I can't see that well to do that stuff right. But if you'd like to read it, or if not, it just lists all the people, and it thanks our community for stepping up. I mean, you know, you look at different churches. Church on the Move, my God, they had, they had 40 or 70 dogs in there with all those people. Had about 400, 500 people in there. And you had everything from big dogs that were, were, were there to those yappers that always bark at everything that turns around. Every time there's a fly lands on their nose, they bark. And, and they were all in one room, the lights were out, the dogs were barking, and everybody was laying there sleeping. It was incredible to see how everybody came together. And, you know, Church on the Move went out of their way, and they had a, that hotel out there, they're remodeling, and they put families in that. And this, this deal's not over, because we're going to get more and more rain, and that ground, when it gets burnt like that or that hot, it doesn't accept water. It just runs off. And we're still working on what to do with our, whether or not what we allow in our landfill facility, but that has to be determined by FEMA and things, because I don't, until we know, I mean, I'm all for helping anybody, but we can't put our own citizens' wealth or threatening or whatever or in jeopardy, the health of our community in jeopardy, unless we know we have whatever facilities we, materials we bring in, that will not harm our community and put our community on the liability. But it's really good. It was so pleasing to watch people's generosity. And, Madam Clerk, would you like to read that?
In the wake of the recent events that forced our neighboring Riedosa citizens to seek refuge in our beloved city of Roswell, we find it imperative to recognize and commend the extraordinary efforts of the many community organizations, citizens, businesses, and government agencies that played pivotal roles in ensuring their safety and well-being of those Riedosa residents. Whereas the city of Roswell, in a time of crisis, witnessed an unprecedented exodus of our friends and neighbors from Riedosa, who amid, who amid prevail and uncertainty sought solace and security within our city limits. And whereas the immediate and compassionate response from our local organizations, businesses, agencies, and individuals not only exemplified the true spirit of community and solidarity, but also served as a beacon of hope and resilience of those who had lost so much. And whereas it is through the selfless dedication and tireless efforts of these organizations, businesses, agencies, and individuals that we're able to extend a comforting hand and provide the necessary support to our Riedosa brethren, reinforcing the bonds that unite us as one community. Now, therefore, we, the city of Roswell, hereby extend our heartfelt gratitude and profound appreciation to the myriad organizations, businesses, agencies, and individuals for their invaluable contributions during the challenging time. Many of the organizations, businesses, and agencies that gave support are recognized on the list accompanying this proclamation. Let it be known that the city of Roswell stands united in expressing our deepest gratitude to all those organizations, businesses, agencies, and individuals that contributed to Roswell's support of the Riedosa neighbors during this time of need. Their exemplary service and unwavering commitment have not only provided critical support to temporary displaced Riedosa residents, but have also fortified our collective resilience and reaffirmed our shared values of compassion and generosity. In witness whereof, we do here undo set our hand and cause the seal of the city of Roswell to be affixed this 11th day of July. Signed, Mayor Jennings, Chad Cole, and myself. By publicly acknowledging the noble deeds, we emphasize the value and impact of the contributions made by so many organizations, businesses, agencies, and individuals. We recognize their actions as essential and commendable. Through this proclamation, we express our collective gratitude and commitment to supporting and uplifting one another in the times of need. You want me to read the names?
There's about everybody on town on that. And I probably would go ahead, if you know somebody that, when you read this list of, of people, if you know somebody who we missed, we can add that to this, because there were people that were unbelievable in the things they did. I mean, it was, it was just fantastic and really made you feel good to be, you know, from Roswell and all the things they stepped up and did. So if there's no objection to that, we'll go ahead and copy that and send it to the, put it out for, put it in a frame or something, and we'll get, and so if you know somebody who did a lot, please let Amalia know, and we'll, we'll add their name to the list, so. Okay, next we have, we have a report. Pardon?
Mr. Mayor.
Pardon?
On, on that point, we're-
Oh, okay, yes. Councilman Corn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have T-shirts on, on the back of your chairs, and there's a story behind those T-shirts. And I want to reiterate that story. Not only the city of Roswell and our surrounding neighbors, but people all over the state are doing what they can to help the folks in Riedosa. And there's a small company in Los Cruces that came up with this T-shirt, and they're donating money to the, to the victims in Riedosa. And the last time I checked, they'd raised $10,000, which I think is pretty good for a little, little place in Los Cruces. Since I ordered these, they have come up with another design, and the money that they raised from that design is going to go help the Mescaleros. So I think it's fantastic, not only from everybody that was involved here locally, that the rest of the state is, is stepping up, lots of communities, and I, I think it's, sorry, we had to have such a tragedy to find out how well everybody can work together.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, seeing, we'll go to item 23 to Ms. Barbara Gomez for Main Street Roswell, a report.
My glasses on, so I can see you guys clearly. Good afternoon, Mayor and city councilors. Thank you for this opportunity to be able to give you a report on Main Street Roswell. In your packet, you've already received our annual report, and right now, I would like to give you an overview of what we've done this year. This is for 2023 and some of 2024. Yes, and Amalia's going to pass out to you something that I thought had been left out of the presentation, but it was in the presentation, so either way, you got an extra copy. Okay? Oh, you're going to make me do it? Okay. Which one is it? The, the right one? This is the 2022-2023 Impact Report. Just to let you know, Main Street Roswell, our, our fiscal year is a calendar year, so we start in January and end in December, so we're in a little different place than the city is. So anyways, so let me start on this report. First of all, of course, I'd like to thank everyone, specifically the city of Roswell, for our partnership, and all of those who are partners with us in the community, including- including the county and the many people throughout the, the Board of Directors, um, and people that helps, help us with the events. And so a big thank you again, specifically to the city of Roswell. Um, I kinda wanted to go over the Main Street approach with you guys, just to let you know. Um, hold on just a second. Um, actually, Amalia, I'm not sure that this is the correct present, presentation. Is this one, it should've said twenty-three, twenty-four. You don't have that, you don't have that one?
No ma'am, that was what was in the email.
Oh, good, okay. Well, then I guess you don't get a presentation, you just, that's what it's gonna be talk, okay? Uh, so the first thing I wanted to go over with you guys was, of course, my message from myself. The first thing I wanted to go over with you is the Main Street District. I understand that, uh, a lot of people don't know where our Main Street District starts or where it ends. So our Main Street District, it starts, um, on Eighth Street, just on the other side of McDonald's, and it ends at Alameda. It also goes east and west, so we encompass, uh, Virginia and part of the railroad district. Uh, going on the other side to the west, we encompass Richardson, but just within those areas from Eighth Street, uh, to Alameda. I wanted to talk to you today about some of our accomplishments, some of the accomplishments that we've completed this year. Uh, myself, I have completed this, uh, the certification to become a certified executive director. This certification takes a lot of hours to complete, a lot of training, and this is submitted to New Mexico Main Street. They then, um, certify all the different directors, uh, throughout, uh, New Mexico. There's approximately thirty-three Main Streets throughout New Mexico, and not all of them, uh, have certified executive directors. So it's kind of a big deal for us to be able to do that. The other thing is, Main Street Roswell, we completed all the reporting and documentation to earn my, our 2023 accreditation through New Mexico Main Street and Main Street America. Again, of the thirty-three, uh, Main Streets within New Mexico, not all of them are accredited. Some of them are affiliated and not accredited. And you might wonder what, why is it important for us to be accredited? We are not able to apply for big capital outlay funding that comes through New Mexico Main Street without being accredited. So it's, it's a big deal for us to be able to ask for funding. And I will go over some of that funding with you here quickly. Um, economic transformation strategies. Uh, one of the things that Main Street is charged to do is to work on economic transformation strategies. So we commute, we continue to promote the Main Street corridor as a viable option for shopping, eating, and entertainment via radio, Facebook, newspaper, and posters. We promote activities that happen downtown in the district that attract diverse groups, such as families, children, and adults via farmer's market events and beautification efforts. We continue to collaborate with the city of Roswell and Chavas County to revitalize and enhance the downtown district. Uh, through the Wayfinding Plan of 2016 and the Great Blocks, uh, the Great Blocks, uh, way fund, funding as well. Capacity building. We continue, and by capacity building, it means that we're trying to build enough people to help us do the work of Main Street. So, uh, we provide presentations to stakeholders regarding social media promotion and a visioning session to create interest and buzz among the corridor. Create state, we create stakeholder and event vendor surveys, uh, to gauge a level of success and to assist in, uh, meeting stakeholder and Main Street goals. Uh, we create and update vacant building listings with pictures, uh, capacity of buildings, ownerships, uh, rental fees, and improvement needs. So what we do on our Facebook, not on our Facebook, I'm sorry, our website, is that we try to list all the building, uh, the buildings that are available for rent or for sale. So when people give us a call, we try to give them information about who owns those buildings and how to get into those buildings to keep our Main Street alive and keep it viable with, uh, hopefully retail businesses, is what we're hoping to attract. Um, again, with our economic transformation and our capacity building, uh, we're trying to build a strong and engaged Board of Directors. We currently have ten Board of Directors, uh, via board training through New Mexico Main Street. We're also trying to grow our volunteer base by publicizing the need for volunteers. We utilize a volunteer forum to create a database of volunteers and their, and list their, where they'd like to work, their strengths, and where they would like to assist. We utilize New Mexico Main Street to create a volunteer training program as well. Um, when I told you earlier that we are able to apply for funding through New Mexico Main Street, one of the big fundings that we applied for in twenty, in 2022 and then, um, was a, the Great Blocks Grant. It was a one-point-two-million-dollar grant of capital outlay funding through New Mexico Main Street Great Blocks Grant. That grant, uh, was originally, uh, planned to be a partnership between the city and Main Street. Uh, and this funding can only come through Main Street to the city. Um, unfortunately, it was not gonna work out with the city. They could not, could not, uh, work with us on that specific project. So we moved that project on over to the county, and they were willing to take on that project. That became a resolution that was signed by the city council. And sitting in front of you is a picture of the, um, the upcoming, what's gonna be called the Chavas County Cultural Plaza. It's gonna be located, uh, behind the parking lot of the courthouse. So there's a picture of the front of it and the back of it. That is probably about ninety-seven percent completed already. We will have, be having a groundbreaking sometime this month in July. Um, also on that, we also, uh, Chavas County also received, so it falls within, that plaza falls within our corridor. Remember, I told you the outline of our corridor? So that, uh, that plaza is gonna fall within the Main Street corridor. So we're really excited about that. Uh, Chavas County also applied for a grant through a grant called Quality of Life, and they received two-hundred-and-one-thousand, two-hundred, I'm sorry, two-hundred-and-one-thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. And so they use that money, they use that money for design and planning. We're still seeking a little bit more funding for that. But as you can see from the pictures in front, from the picture in front of you, there's a lot of work being done on that already. We've had a really great, uh, time meeting with their designers and with their engineering department. And Mr. Nahar has also been able to provide us with information as needed, and we've worked really well with the city as well on this project. Uh, the 2016 Wayfinding Plan, uh, we picked, and again, I'm working with, uh, Mr. Nahar, and, uh, we were able also to get funding through the New Mexico Tourism Destination Ford. So we received a hundred-thousand-dollar grant towards that. And by the Wayfinding Plan, this were elements, um, for the district. Some of the elements were, um, um, there was gonna be, there's supposed to be a gateway and also some kiosks that give direct directives, and also some benches that were gonna be placed out there. At this time, we're only working on the gateway. So we did receive a hundred thousand from New Mexico Tourism for design and planning, which, like I said, we've been working on Mr. Nahar towards that. And then we also applied for capital outlay funding. Uh, that was with the help of the Economic Development Department and also City Councilor, uh, Christina Arnold. And so we received four hundred thousand towards that capital outlay funding. So that Wayfinding Plan is in process right now. Um, I will, I, I mean, I don't have my presentation for you, but we had talked about a number of different gateways that we wanted. Uh, two of them were, well, we had planned on having one on the north side of town and one on the south side of town. The one on the north side of town, uh, we decided that the best place for it would be on Ninth Street, just past the, the Convention Center. And the second one would be on Walnut. And that gateway was basically inviting you to the Main Street District. Um, after a lot of planning and looking over different ideas, um, we came to the conclusion that we couldn't afford the one we wanted, so we have a different one that's gonna be pretty cool as well. Um, and that, we're only gonna start with the one on the north side. And, uh, because we don't have enough money yet to build both of them. And we'll be working on the kiosks and some more of the elements to the Wayfinding Plan. Just looking ahead, just to let you know that we're gonna continue the projects we started. We're not gonna stop those projects. We're also working to establish a new business accelerator. And what that means to you is that we wanna bring new businesses to the corridor and focus on possibly on a brewery or a restaurant in the district. We're gonna continue our work with Main Street property owners and to share with them the transformation strategy, strategies for the corridor. We plan to match their investments in getting new or fixing facades to generate a beautiful and vibrant Main Street. Uh, these projects will have a major impact on the Main Street District and add to the economic vitality of the city of Roswell as a whole. And of course, overall, some of our projects, as you already know, is our, uh, bottle-cap to benches, that provides the benches that you see downtown. Uh, we continue our holiday lighting project that happens around Christmas time. Uh, we also have a community planting, planting day where we plant flowers up and down Main Street. This year, we also purchased new flags up and down Main Street, uh, the US flags that were tattered or torn. We purchased more of those, and the city of Roswell helped us to put those up. And of course, we continue to work on events. We just completed the UFO Festival. And thank you to many of you that attended that, if you attended. It was pretty, it was pretty huge, a lot going on, and we think it went very well. But, uh, either way, that was a really great event, and we'll continue with the Alien Fest as we move on. Uh, we will continue with the Chili Cheese Festival as an event, uh, that focuses on, uh, on our farmers and ranchers and our chili and cheese and cowboy life, I guess you can say. Um, and of course, we have our holiday events where we light our community Christmas tree. So we have a lot of events going on along with trying to, uh, make our Main Street more viable and more interesting to look at and bring more people downtown. And I was going to, I gave you a sheet that you can't see, but we do have ten board members. Today, I have two board members with me. I have Peggy Seskey, that many of you know. She is our vice president. And then I have Rodney Austin, who is one of our board members. Um, and I stand for questions if any of you read my report and have any questions on that. Nope? Thank you. Pardon me?
I had a lot of glowing reports about the UFO Festival on Main Street and how well it was attended and people that, we did a real good job this year again. So, if nothing else, that'd certainly make Dusty Huck be happy, so.
I'm just glad it's over. It was a really, really big job, and it was a fast job. And a great big thank you to Juliana Halverson. Uh, she did a lot of work on that, did a lot of graphics and a lot of promotion for us, so we're really lucky to have her, and thank you guys for the support. We had a great time working with TJ. She was a real asset and helped us with anything that we needed. So thank you to all of you for your support. Like I said, it was a big event, and we had a short time to put it together, but I think it came together pretty good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we come up, we, we have a public participation on agenda items and non-agenda items. We have no one that has signed up on agenda items, but on the non-agenda items, we have Mr. Bobby Maples, James Montalto, I hope that's right, and Marcus Stanfield. Uh, Mr. Maples. Yeah? We've always had limits on that, so do the best you can, but it's fine, but it's fine. You came all the way to sit here, so.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'm Bobby Maples. I live around thirteen-hundred North Maple Street. At the end of my block down there, just last week, uh, two weeks ago, I had, uh, people move in a double-wide trailer house over there. You got pictures up there, I sent pictures for everybody to look. This is about a nineteen-eighty model double-wide trailer. They put it on the lot over there, and they didn't have permits or anything for it. I called the city. City said they didn't have permits and they were gonna stop it. They went over there, they didn't stop nothing. They went over there and left it on the lot without permits, without permission, anything, for two weeks. Then all of a sudden, they go over there and they back it up, and they start getting the lot ready. I went over there and I asked, how come they were doing that? I have a problem with the man down there at the Code Enforcement Office, his name is Mr. Butts. Whenever he talks to me, he likes to yell and scream at me and hang up the phone. He won't talk to me when I go down there on purpose. He only gets pissed at me because I ask the questions that need to be asked. I asked him about how come that trailer house was being pulled in down there when that's a flood zone? It has to be built up on a platform. It has to be up. My house is up there, there's a new house right behind me that's had to build up to get over there because it's a flood zone. All comes down there and goes right there in front of that house where it's at, that's where it drains. It has to be raised up. He told me there wasn't a damn thing I could do about, his words exactly, wasn't a damn thing I could do about it, that trailer was going in. And they're over there, it's supposed to be, I thought, on a, on a cement, uh, pad. They're cinder blocking it up. There's windows broke out in that house, the siding's falling off of that house. Look at it, it's a nineteen-eighty model trailer. What does that do to the property values over there for everybody? There's a little house right next door there to him, a little stucco house, nice little brown house. Those are fifty, sixty-thousand-dollar homes in that area over there. What's that thirty-five-hundred-dollar trailer gonna do to that house next door to him over there? What's that do to the property values? And where do they get off, if that's a residential area, uh, just pulling a double-wide trailer in and parking it and telling it's too bad, it's going in? There was no utilities on that land over there. There was a burned-out house that was on that property, and that was it. They pulled it up and did all of it this last week, and they're still putting it together today. I'm just wondering, how come? I pay taxes over there, my property's not gonna go, it's gonna go down in value. Are y'all gonna redo the tax deal over there where I'm at? My property tax is gonna go down? My value on my property will be worse now that there's a double-wide trailer in my neighborhood. And I was told there was nothing that anybody could do about it. You could put a double-wide on any lot in the Roswell city limits that you wanted to as long as they approved it. Well, are they God? They don't, they don't even look at the neighborhoods or what they're doing to the neighborhoods when they bring trailers in like that. It's wrong. There's nothing right about that. I've owned that property since nineteen-eighty-four. Been drug-addled, everything over there could go wrong, and that neighborhood's gone wrong in that neighborhood. I don't need trailers over there. We're trying to get it cleaned up. This is wrong, it shouldn't be there. And I didn't like the attitude of the man when he talked to him, and he's a public servant, and he cusses me, yells at me on the phone, then hangs up and then won't talk to me when I go down to see him. I don't know. I, that's my saying, I don't know, guys. I just hope that maybe y'all could do something about it, it's not right. It's supposed to be up on a pad and stuff, it's a flood zone. What can you do? He doesn't wanna listen to anybody, apparently me not. Would you like that trailer over there in a lot by your house? Because the way he put it, any lot in town, you could put a trailer just like that on there, and there's not a thing you could say about it. I appreciate your time, guys. I hope you can look at that for me and try to work it out because it ain't right. If they start doing that, they can put trailers up anywhere in this town that they want to because those guys decide. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Maples.
Mr. Maples?
Councilman Hellebrand.
I happened to drive by there. I agree with you. But Mike, they temporarily have that trailer on another lot, do they not?
They pushed it back on another lot that wasn't theirs.
It's not their lot.
To bring in, yeah, to bring in all the topsoil and all the, the gravel to put the pad for that trailer. Then they pulled it up on the lot right there beside that. It's on the very corner of Thirteenth and Kansas. And it just buries that little house beside it, I mean, it...
I'm gonna ask for this to be investigated and reported back to this council as to what Mr. Maples is saying, the way he's been treated by city staff? Because we should believe in customer service, and Mr. Maples is a customer of this city. And I hope that if that's true, which I did believe Mr. Maples wouldn't come up here and tell us something that's not true, that we have a little attitude change effective tomorrow. This is discouraging to hear one of our citizens come and talk about this and being said, nothing can be done. I forwarded an email to Mr. Matthews today, and it was a, almost the same type of thing, happened to do with animal control. And we're still, just the way it is. It was told, just the way it is. Very disappointing. I know I get questions, and I'm sure other councillors get questions from citizens of this community. We take them very serious. I respond to every one of them, and with answers to the best of my ability, and hand them off to you all if I feel that it needs to be some action by city administration. And this is disturbing to hear what Mr. Maples is saying.
I think so. Counsel, Mayor Protem Hildenbrand, I absolutely agree with you, it's unacceptable. It's unacceptable.
And I expect some kind of information coming back to this council as a plan of action to get this taken care of. Mr. Maples, I apologize for the city and their behavior.
I thank y'all for taking time to listen to me. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Any further comments? Okay, next, we have James.
Good evening, City Council. First, I want to thank Councilor Arnold for bringing up the issue with the airport not having competition. I think that's really important that we have competition. Perhaps Southwest could be one that you could explore. I now, I travel frequently on the airlines, and I avoid Roswell Airport at all costs. I would love to, it's ten minutes away from my house. I go to Albuquerque because I don't want to get stuck in Dallas. I got stuck in Dallas in the middle of the night last year, stayed in a seedy motel in the middle of Ranger, Texas, and had to rent a car, and so I think we should be telling the airlines and not worrying about us taking care of them, maybe Americans should take care of us. Maybe they should invest in our parks or, or something instead of us worrying about them, you know? It seems like they have a monopoly here, so I didn't actually come here to say that, but since it came up, I wanted to just add my two cents. The reason I did come here tonight is because I wanted to tell you that I recently moved to Roswell about two years ago from the northeast, if you couldn't tell by my accent. I was looking for a place that more closely aligns with my values and a nice place to raise my fam, my son and for my family. But since I've arrived, I've noticed several quality of life issues that if remain unchecked, I don't think bodes well for the future of Roswell. One example is the homeless or addicted standing at the corner of parking lots, holding up signs asking for drug money. You guys see that when you go to Walmart? I have to explain to my son. I'm amazed, and not in a good way, that the city allows this to go unchecked. But with that said, the reason I'm, I am here tonight is the graffiti that's tagged on the tower on East Second and Railroad with a foreign flag and the accompanying phrase ceasefire. I can attest to what Mr. Hildebrand said. He's very responsive, and he responds to every email that I send, and I appreciate So I have a question, have we been conquered? This is America. There's a Palestinian flag up on that tower, visible from Main Street, Second, Third, and Fourth. I wonder how Main Street Roswell feels about that? We had an Alien Festival with fifty thousand people from around the world. Is that what they were treated to when they were here? There should not be any foreign flag displayed in our community, let alone one that represents the call to end an entire nation of people. The associated phrase ceasefire painted alongside it is a call for a one-sided cessation of fighting. It is not a call for Hamas to put down their weapons, release the hostages, and negotiate. It's a call for Israel to stop fighting a war that was brutally waged against them on October seventh. If Hamas and their terrorist supporters laid down their weapons, there would be no more fighting. If Israel laid down their weapons, there would be no more Israel. We should stand against this hateful messaging in our community. As I said, it can be viewed from Third, Main, Second, Third, and Fourth. I sent pictures to Mr. Hildebrand, Mr. Chappelle, Mr. Jennings, and Mr. Cole. I'm sure you could see it, just drive down the street. And it's my understanding there are no graffiti ordinances on the books. Respectfully, I think that's unacceptable, and we need them. And I hope you will be reaching out to the owner and asking him to have the graffiti removed and possibly better secure his building so this won't happen again. I hope it's taken care of in a timely manner and that these types of messages don't multiply, especially with all the people that we're expecting for the air races in the near future. I will end my remarks by quoting scripture. Genesis 12:3 states that God will bless those who bless Israel and curse those who curse Israel. Leaving that up there is not only offensive to me and others like me, it is also offensive to an entire nation of people and the Judeo-Christian values this nation was founded upon. More importantly, I believe that message is an affront to God. Thank you for your time.
Excuse me, may I get your name and address for the record?
Sure. We have people on TV that might be watching it, if you would. Thank you. One of the things, we used to do a lot more graffiti removal in town, and then there are a lot of, there were some complaints and stuff about anti-donation is my understanding. So that has somewhat limited us, and that's it. But, you know, that, that's just, you know, we'll, we'll try to get through that and see what we can do to, to, to work with that. I agree about, you know, there's no place for that, and it is, yeah, it is a freedom of speech, but when you do it on somebody else's property, then it becomes vandalism or destruction. So, because I know this individual doesn't want to, I, when, everything, I've looked at that sign up there, you know, it could be very expensive. Paint over it's one thing, it could be very expensive for removal because of the height of it, and I'm not sure about the structure, that, that building is very old, and so, you know, but I, it is scary.
I'll volunteer to paint over it if the, if we get permission. I don't want to take matters into my own hands, I want to do things the right way. It's my understanding also that, that same phrase was written over by the mall on one of the walls, and I think the owner power washed it, did the right thing. Hopefully, this gentleman can do the right thing, the owner as well. So anything you can do, I'd appreciate it. I don't want to see that in my community.
When you're up that high, though, it's very expensive to pay to get that kind of stuff done, the insurance and everything else. It's like cutting trees.
If someone were to break in up there, those whoever did that, and they fell off, would the property owner be responsible? And maybe that's something he should think about securing that as well, because it could be a liability for him. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I actually wanted to tell the gentleman one thing, if I may. Okay.
Councilor Arnold.
Thank you. I guess, is the box not working? I'm sorry.
No, the box isn't working, so I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just real quick, I wanted to make note that on Tuesday, we have our public safety meeting, and it's at two o'clock at City Hall. You can join in person at four o'clock. My apologies, I've been corrected. Good thing I would have showed up really early. But we have a discussion item that you might find interesting if you'd like to attend or visit with us via Zoom, but it is the Grant Pass versus Johnston Supreme Court ruling, and I think it's going to be very interesting to kind of hit on your concern regarding the homeless and panhandling and coming in to actually be part of that discussion. I absolutely invite you and ask you to join us, okay? All right.
Did I get the information or leave you my information so you can email me?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mr. Marcus Stansfield.
How are you guys? I appreciate, I appreciate you letting me swing by.
Address and payment address for the record.
Oh, sure, right now?
Yeah.
My name is Marcus Stansfield. My address is.